I'm free, my wife is doing very well. Appreciate all your thoughts and prayers. So it is seven o'clock. I will call to order the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Wednesday, February the seventeenth. I've asked Ms. Gibson to lead us in the pledge. And after the pledge, Mr. Bates will lead us in prayer. So you want to stand and we'll have our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray, Lord, thank you for being able to be here today. Thank you for the technology that allows us to be two different places, but at the same time, be able to conduct the citizens' business here tonight. We do pray for everyone that is a part of this meeting tonight. And we're thankful for our city, we're thankful for our leadership. And where, Lord, we pray to give us your mind in the matters that we discussed here that would be in the best interest of our city. Lords, we certainly pray for our first responders. Thank you for all that they do for us. And for our street department, clearing the roads. And we're just glad that we can be about this place, be about your business on behalf of these citizens here in our city. We ask that you again would be with our leadership, not only our nation, but our state, our governor. And of course, as we think about the city again, the mayor and all those that make this a great place in which to live and rear family. So we ask that you would be open with us, watch over us as we attempt to do your will on behalf of these citizens tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Roll call.
Bates.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Dine.
You did, Bob.
President.
He's there.
Gibson.
Here.
Neil. This absent. Hopper.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Here.
And Williams.
Here. We do have a quorum. Before we move on, I noticed that it looks like there's a scout here from Troop 564. Welcome, glad to have you a part of the meeting tonight. As things normally if we'd be in person, we would have asked you to have led us into pledge tonight. But it's good to have you and we'll try to explain some things to you along the way. If you don't mind, tell us your name and why you're listening in tonight.
My name's Mason and I'm listening for a merit badge of citizenship of the community.
All right, thank you, welcome Mason, glad to have you with us. All of you should receive copies of the minutes from our last regular meeting of February the first. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Okay, I'm not sure who did that.
It was Mr. Dine.
Mr. Dine, thank you. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, then roll call on the minutes.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Minutes are approved on a vote of eight to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
Good evening, you should have all received a copy of the items in my monthly. It's been uploaded to SharePoint for your review. Ms. Coons did prepare that report, so if you have any questions, please reach out to her with any questions.
All right, thank you. Anything from the controller at this time?
I do have one item this evening. At the end of last year, council did instruct staff to work on a plan for a two-tiered sewer rate system related to the INI issues. So we are still working on that. I just wanted to let council know that that hasn't been forgotten, that ball is still being taken care of, and we will hopefully by the first March meeting have something to present.
All right, thank you. Any committee or board reports? All of you should have received copies of the, my report on the last RDC meeting. If you have any questions, just let me know. Any other reports? All right, this is a time for audience to speak to the council concerning items that are on the agenda. So if you're listening in tonight, would like to address the council about something that is on the agenda. Please speak up and state your name and address for the record. All right, hearing none. Then moving on to ordinances and resolutions, first reading, ordinance 2102.
An ordinance to reestablish a Greenwood Chemotive Capital Development Fund pursuant to Indiana Code Section 36-9, 15.5, sponsored by Gibson and Hopper.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopper. This is scheduled for a public hearing tonight. So we will open it up for a public hearing. If you are here and wish to speak for or against ordinance 2102, please speak up and state your name and address for the record. All right. Hearing none, then we'll close the public hearing and open up for discussion on the council. Any discussion on the council? All right, hearing none, then roll call on ordinance 2102, first reading.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Ordinance 2102 passes first reading eight to zero. Ordinance 2103.
An ordinance amending Greenwood Municipal Code 1993 as amended, Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 618, to allow wider discretion in setting fines for violation of domestic animals and vehicle regulations. Sponsored by Dine.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Dine, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion on the council about this ordinance? All right. Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2103, first reading.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance 2103 passes first reading eight to zero. Ordinance 2104.
An ordinance amending Greenwood Municipal Code 1993, Chapter 8, Article 4, Section 831, to clarify language prohibiting overnight parking in city lots. Sponsored by Dine.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Dine, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on ordinance 2104? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2104, first reading.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
And Campbell.
Aye. Ordinance 2104 passes first reading eight to zero. Resolution 2102.
A resolution of the Greenwood Common Council requesting the State Board of Accounts to examine financial statements prepared in accordance with Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, GAAP, pursuant to Indiana Code Section 511130, sponsored by Bates and Gibson.
Do have a motion?
So moved.
By Mr. Lexi, a second.
Second.
Was that Mr. Bates?
It's Mr. Bates.
Mr. Bates, all right. Any discussion, resolution 2102? Hearing none, then roll call, resolution 2102, first reading.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Resolution 2102 passes first reading eight to zero. There are none under second reading. New business introduction to new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance number 2105.
An ordinance amending Chapter 8, Article 4, Section 828, and Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 238 of the Greenwood Municipal Code 1993, to amend the penalties for parking violations and amending related sections. Sponsored by Dine.
All right, anybody wish to speak to this?
Mr. President, it's basically clarifying, defining more of what the ordinance spells out and how the fines should be issued by the officers where it sets it and then the judge reviews everything and it's just clarifying and simplifying everything.
All right. Who requested this ordinance? Was this another one from the judge?
This came from the police department.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on ordinance 2105? All right, ordinance 2106.
An ordinance amending the 2021 Salary Ordinance, Common Council Ordinance Number 2031, to increase the office manager compensation in the Department of Community Development Services, sponsored by Bates.
All right, somebody want to explain this?
Yes, this is Greg Wright, City Controller. It was brought to our attention recently that a position that we created in the CBS Department for an office manager with recording secretary duties basically has the, essentially the same job description as another position, the legal office manager with recording secretary duties, but has a significant discrepancy between the the pay levels. So we wanted to bring those in line with that. And that's also why we're requesting suspension through second reading is so that we can bring that person's salary in line with what the other office manager with recording secretary duties is being paid.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wright?
I don't remember seeing anything, Mr. Wright. Are we taking that back to the first of the year?
No, it would not be retroactive. It would be from approval by council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is one of those times, Mason, that I'm going to explain things. So you saw we already had some ordinances where we took votes on. And on the last ordinance, we did not take a vote on it because typically ordinances go through a three-meeting process. There's a meeting where they're introduced and we're told about them, which was with the last ordinance and this ordinance. And then at the next meeting, there's a first reading and we have a vote at that time. And then at the third meeting, there's a second reading and another vote. So we vote on each ordinance twice before it actually goes into effect. We can, and tonight we, we at least will attempt to do that, to suspend those rules all the way through the second reading so that this ordinance will be introduced, voted on in the first reading, and voted on at the second reading, all in the same evening. To do that, it takes a two-thirds majority to pass it through. I believe that's correct. Two-thirds majority to pass it through first reading. And if we do it in the same night, it takes a unanimous vote to pass that through in the second reading. So that's why we'll be doing this tonight. So I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules through first reading on ordinance 2106.
I'm there.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine, is that right?
Yes.
All right, any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, roll call on suspension through first reading on ordinance 2106.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
And Gibson. Aye.
Order is 2106 is suspended through first reading on a vote of eight to zero. Do you have a motion on first reading?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine, any discussion? Questions? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2106, first reading.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hamilton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Is that it? Right, ordinance 2106 passes first reading eight to zero.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules through second reading.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine, any discussion on suspension through second reading? Hearing none, then roll call on the suspension of ordinance 2106 through second reading, suspension of the rules through second reading.
Sorry, where did I start with?
It was me, Mr. Hopper.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson. And Hopper.
Aye.
Ordinance 2106, rules are suspended through second reading. Do you have a motion on second reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bates to have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson, any discussion?
A quick question for Greg. Are we going to have to come back later on to do an additional appropriation for this, or is the money already in these funds?
No, we have the fundings available.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2106, second reading.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
And Lexi.
Aye.
Ordinance 2106 passes second reading eight to zero. Resolution 2103.
A resolution approving an interlocal agreement between the city of Greenwood and Pleasant Township, Johnson County regarding fire protection. Sponsored by Gibson.
Mr. Hogg, Chief Hogg, you will talk about this?
Good evening, this is my annual meeting that I get to come before you and talk about the interlocal agreement with Pleasant Township with the unincorporated area in Pleasant Township that isn't part of the city of Greenwood. Obviously, this is a longstanding interlocal agreement that, that we appreciate having. And also with it, there's potential to have other money for special appropriations through Pleasant Township with this interlocal agreement.
All right, any questions for the chief? All right, thank you, Chief Hogg, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Resolution 2104.
A resolution declaring certain area within the city of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax abatement and setting the time and place for a public hearing. That's for Shear GW5703 North Graham Road, sponsored by Hopper and Campbell.
Anybody want to talk about this one?
I'm here, I'd like to talk to Mr. Campbell if you would.
Right, Mr. Sherman?
Thank you. This project is from the Peterson Company, Larry Seigler is also on the call. This is for a 169,728 square foot industrial building consisting of 12 docks, three overhead doors. The building can be demised into smaller units for multi-tenant leases. This building, as you might recall, some of the Peterson Companies buildings, GW2 and GW3 are on Keaton Way and then also on Cheney Avenue. So they're just right across the street. And this, this is just a little north and on the east side of Graham Road. Just to give you a little color around what we're asking for, this is an abatement for 10 years. The, as I mentioned, our built, building GW2 on Keaton and also GW3 on Cheney. We are indicating that we will have an average of $19.50 per hour in the compensation. And, and to give you a little history around that, in, in the building GW2 that's on Keaton Way, it's the first building on the south as you turn in the Keaton Way. That has just recently been finished within the last couple of years. That building is 143,000 square feet. And there are three different businesses that are in that. These buildings are easily demised into about 50,000 square feet, which for economic development purposes for our community is, is kind of a sweet spot for small business. And we have three of those in GW2. And the average wage in that building are 52,706. Now, if you go down to Cheney Avenue, which is just west, you'll see the GW3 building, that is a 260,400 square foot building. It is about 75% occupied now. Of the 75% that, that is occupied right now, that has an average wage in that building of $59,611. And that's from the CF1s that we did for 19, pay 20. So you can, you can see the benefit of a an abatement on a building this size that we can demise it down into these 50,000 square foot parcels. All of this abated tax money goes to the tenants. The developer does not reap the benefit of that. He just, he, the developers, Peterson Company and they're going to be able to have market rents because of the, because of the abatement. So I, I could take any questions that you have. The, the investment in the real estate is just under a million dollars. And the investment in the building is just going to be over 7.6 million dollars. So there's quite a, quite an investment by the Peterson Company in this piece. So I'm available to take any questions. We're asking for a 10-year abatement and that we will be starting this in, in about October of 21, if we can't do that sooner.
Any questions for Mr. Sherman? Appreciate you letting us know about those other two buildings and the wages there. Could you give us the name of a, one of the, one or two of the businesses?
Absolutely. We have in, in the GW2 building, the Rubber Products Distributors are in there as well as Hardware Sales, Inc. And then also Ernst Machine Products Companies in that building. T and Industries is in, in the second building I mentioned. Toyota Tushio is in there as well, and also Wattco Supply Chain Services LLC. And all of those are taking around 50,000 to 60,000 square feet, so it's an excellent size. These buildings, from an economic development standpoint, have been great for our community. They have great wages and you know, they're, they have high quality wages without having just a enormous number of employees at lower rates. So
All right.
Very happy to, to see this. We would also ask for suspension of the rules tonight. I think Mr. Campbell, you saw on your agenda through first reading, please.
Any questions for Mr. Sherman? I would entertain a motion for suspension through first reading.
I'll make that motion.
Right, we have a motion, Mr. Hopper, a second.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Dine, any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, roll call, suspension of the rules through first reading on a resolution 2104.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Aye.
Rules are suspended on resolution 2104 through first reading on a vote of seven to one. Do you have a motion on first reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, do you have a second?
So, second.
Second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion on resolution 2104? Hearing none, then roll call on resolution 2104, first reading.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
And Williams.
Aye.
Resolution 2104 passes first reading vote of five to three. Miscellaneous business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman, appreciate it. This is a second opportunity for members of the audience to address the council, this time on items that are not on the agenda. So if you would like to speak to the council, please speak up, state your name and address for the record. All right, no one? Hearing done, moving on. Any miscellaneous business from the council?
Mr. President, I would like to send thanks and appreciation to the street department and all the other people or all the other employees that helped with that. I know that the Parks Department helps out at the airport with plowing and it just takes the, the whole group to make that happen.
Yes, I think our city does a great job on plowing the streets and taking care of our responsibility. And I saw a post on Facebook where somebody was complaining. And I will have to say that the vast majority of the people who responded defended our city and the, the job that our street department does. So I was very pleased with that. I thought that was very good. We do have one conflict of interest.
That is for Lieutenant Brian Blackwell of the Greenwood Police Department, who may choose to bid on a vehicle being sold through city auction this year.
All right. All in favor of accepting this conflict of interest, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Right, that is passed unanimously. And all of you should have received copies of the contract and, and a report from the social. As you know, as part of this, the council's budget, we partner with the mayor's office and give money to the social every year. And as part of that, we ask that these entities that we give money to give a report back to the council concerning their activities, just so we know what's going on, where the money's going. And so you, all of you should have received that information. And also the contract that was presented and which we do need to approve. So if, are there any questions? All right, do you have a motion to approve the contract with the social for 2021?
So moved.
Okay, motion by, I'm sorry, who made that motion?
I think it was a tie between me and Linda, so.
Okay, we'll go with the, the Mr. Williams and Ms. Gibson, the second. And having a hard time finding it right now. I believe the amount of that is $40,000 total for the year. And so, any questions about that, any discussion? We'll do roll call on the motion to approve the contract with the social.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Bates.
Aye.
Motion is approved on a vote of eight to zero. Thank you, everyone. Yes.
I don't think I have a copy of that report from the social.
All right. We'll make sure you get a copy.
All right, thank you.
I, I believe it's been uploaded to SharePoint.
Okay. All right. All right, anything else? Miscellaneous business from the council? Other miscellaneous business, anything for the Corporation Council?
Nothing further, thank you.
Anything from the controller?
Nothing, thank you.
Anything from the mayor?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, before we adjourn, since most of us are not there tonight to sign documents, please get by the city building as soon as you can. Uh, I will be by there next Monday to sign documents. So I will be free, free, free at last next, this weekend. So I'll be able to leave the house. All right, thank you, everyone, and we are adjourned.
Have a good week.
You too, have a good week, everybody.